This is the Selectmen's meeting for 11th of June and we're meeting at Grassmere Town Hall this evening because later at 7 o'clock we're going to be holding an annual all boards meeting at the same location here. First item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God and in the bill of which we may be as just as for our...
I'd like to take up the minutes of our meeting on the 4th of June. You have a motion to accept them? Make a motion to accept them will change vote to vote correction.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Selectmen of the House, I think I missed it.
Yeah, page two, on the middle of the second paragraph, the word Cummings has no G in it, it's Cummings, the name rather.
Any others that can do this? Oh, also favor of the minutes as amended, please say five seconds.
Aye.
Aye. I have one, and that was last Saturday, an employee of the library retired with 20 years of service to the library, Marcia McKay. And the selectman had a proclamation made at that time honoring her 20 years of service to the library, and we also proclaimed the 9th of June designated as the Marcia McKay That was a well-attended ceremony and wished her well in her retirement. Other announcements, private board? Sue?
Thank you, I would like to recognize Evelyn Redmond, who has completed her doctor's degree, so become a...
Excellent. Good. Good job. And just for the record and viewing public, her position at the town hall?
Yes, I'm accountant and welfare officer.
Accountant and welfare officer at the town hall. Next item is the public comment. There's no one in the public here or... No one wishing to speak at this time. Sue, pick up on the next item on the agenda, Town Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Tomorrow evening, Sue Commission, Wednesday morning, Public Safety Committee meeting, Wednesday evening is Cable TV Access Committee meeting, Thursday is planning board... Sue's board. Oh, Sue was canceled, sorry, that was a...
Are all our representatives able to make those meetings? Uh, Sue Commission needs me to cancel. And there is no rep at the Police Department of Safety's meeting? Thank you. Consensus vote, Sue?
Uh, counts April manifest is $310,831.93. The payroll manifest, which also includes withholdings, is $137,756.90. Proclamation for Town Full Eevee, Ray Trencher, Daniel Floyd, Chapel Hill Cemetery, Section 2, Law 13B. Event permits for 60th birthday party, July 14th, motorcycle benefit ride, July 21st, motorcycle benefit ride after-party, July 21st, accident at summer concert at Austin High School softball field, June 23rd, and at Ori Park on August 18th. Also, annual declaration of the PA 38th inventory party form of 2012.
Motion to accept the consensus vote?
Second. Those in favor of the consensus vote, will keep on saying aye?
Aye.
Five zero, yeah.
I'm sorry, who was the second, please? Yes, okay, sweet. Correspondents this evening, we've got an email from Margot Olivia, Riverdale Homes LLC requesting authorization to use town land to access, for access to building a new home for Alfie and Todd at 15 Coles Street. If authorization is granted, it should be conditioned of the town land being restored to its condition prior to the access and that the builder provided a certificate of insurance under the town, Goshen, as secondary insured.
Question? Yes, Phil.
We did something subtle to this a few years back on the local property, and I don't recall if we required any type of collateral because once, once the home is built and there's no longer need for that, who's to say what if the property's been restored to where it was? And if one party says that they restored it to the way it was, and we don't feel any of this, we don't have any collateral, we have no way of making sure that it's...
Actually, this particular property before, I used our own amount to do some tree work on the town land, and because it was a fear that a tree would fall over on his house, and we inspected the property prior to allowing them to go live and inspected it after they were purchased.
Yes, that was my point I wanted to bring up too. Who in the town would be doing the four and half inspection?
Probably the same person as you before, uh, just the town manager.
Well, just want to make it clear. What would be, Selectmen of the House, and what would be the nature of security?
Well, I think that depending on the property, there should be an amount of money that should be held as collateral in case there's an issue, that the town can draw from to restore the property in escrow account.
Right, in some kind of an escrow account, and there should be some valuation around there by public works, for the appropriate party on the upper taxpayer.
Mr. Chair, for what's worth, I'm in agreement with Mr. Chairman of the Selectmen's events as well, I jotted down that, I think we should have some sort of escrow, it might be a couple of thousand dollars, but at least it gives us the peace of mind to know that if it's not put back to its condition prior to construction, that we have, we have monies to then do it ourselves.
This would be very similar to provide one of the prepared sidewalk for my house. I would put a bond.
Road bond.
Yeah, road bond. And it would be valid for 18 months, and then in that case, the inspection by the town engineer to remove the bond. So, something similar to that, so that would be appropriate for a motion, somebody would like to make.
Make a motion that we authorize the use of town land as access to building a new home for Alfie and Nick Mia at 15 Coles Street, providing there was a adequate escrow provided to the town house, and a certificate of insurance, and the town house as secondary insurance. I'll second that.
Question? Yes. Who determines the tax?
Department of Public Works.
In further discussion on the motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, yeah.
Yes, thank you. The assessors recommend signing these change tax minimums from that 12, that's 12, 12-1, and 12-11, and that 9, that's 4-51.
Motion to approve the assessors' recommendations?
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you. SAU 19 has gone up to the feeding of propane and included the town of Austin, and fits this back as they do every year. The vendor expects prices to come down next week. If the volatile market turn will be fined within 24 hours of the price announcement, does the board wish to authorize town administrator hack within the 24-hour window?
Question? Yes, Phil.
When you say in this packet that we're looking at next week, I know you put the packet together last week.
Yes, yes.
So you're talking about this week?
This week.
Okay, and the number that they refer to is the Wednesday of 11 o'clock numbers?
Um, he was not that specific.
That's what he's talking about?
Okay, that's what he...
The, the R R has already posted on its two website, I saw that today. No, I understand that, but the oil crisis that they're talking about are posted at 11, they come out at 11 o'clock, or 6? I have no problem, but we've done this in the past, so you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to authorize the town administrator hack on behalf of town to walk into the oil and propane crisis for the year.
Being the coach on through...
Right, being the negotiator, SAU 19, Goshen School.
Chair, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Do we have two seconds on the table?
Mark.
Oh, I need your first one, sorry.
A cause, did you second? Okay, that goes to Sue. It's a question.
Phil, and Mark, any further discussion? In favor of the motion as stated, will you keep on saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. IT Director Neil Funky requests authorization to travel out of state on July 19th to Rockland, Maine for the V E M, where users group conference total cost $267. And November 11th to 14th in Rockland, Maine for an R user group conference total cost $900. These costs are budgeted in the IT Employee Development Town Hall.
Thank you, Sue. Like a motion to authorize the out-of-state travel for training?
Please, sir. Mark?
Those in favor, will you keep on saying aye?
Aye.
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 Five zero, yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Um, Mesa of the Board authorized meaningful within the Hampshire community planning grant application for $50,000. This grant will be used to hire consultants to study the inaugural area of town and make recommendations as of according to the zoning ordinance, oral regulations, developed regulations. The board now needs to authorize a chairman to sign the grant application, the letter
Mr. Ray, motion, make a motion to authorize a chairman to sign the grant application and the honor committee for the match, $1,500, of which 75% is in kind and 25% in cash.
Second, I motion.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? Any questions? Selectmen have...
So we identified where the match is going to come from, so it takes personnel hours and times. We've identified how everybody come up for the match?
Yes.
Your personnel, your...
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, it's in the accurate application, I don't have it printed on.
Okay, thank you. Those in favor of the motion as stated? Will you keep on saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sue, for all those reports. The Selectmen's discussion, old business, nothing on the agenda. Any of the board members down to review the subject? Moving on, new business for this evening.
I do want to back the old business of the town, Mr. Chairman. We talked about the removal of trees at the Goshen, at the Glen Lake waterfront. I know you drafted one and signed it, sent it out to all non-power. And we identified specifically, my concern is the trees closely together, that one comes back towards all street and long way. Pretty specific about which ones. Have we identified specifically the trees that are going to be taken? Because it doesn't take an overly ambitious person holding a chainsaw to cut down a few long trees, it would take him 50 or 60 years to establish. Is anyone see that?
The answer is yes, from my viewpoint, because I physically stood on that line of cutting and showed the group had to walk through. There were either four to five trees forward of my outspread arms that were coming down, and trees on either end of the line. So, to me, the answer is yes. We were very specific at that walk-through, which trees were coming down. But I guess the concern is to make sure that none of the trees, we only authorized what's grown in the last five years. I think...
These were...
These were more than five. I understand, and I think, I think perhaps the question might, and I don't want to speak for the person who made the question, but I would think that, or my question would be, are we going to make sure that the trees, there are no trees that have any markings that are not intended to come down to prevent them from being taken? Then we could further flag those trees, indicating the town's permitting these, you know, these trees which are in flag to be cut, and, and we could request our non-power to let us know the day of the tree flag, so we could have someone on the side.
That would be my preference, there's so few trees in number, that it's not a great effort to actually identify each and every tree.
You would be able to identify on my permission?
Yeah.
Something like that. Well, yes, I'll, I'll work with public works to get those flagged, I'll take that out of that responsibility of flagging, and we'll monitor on the day of the cutting.
Right, thank you.
I suspect our non-power may respond to my letter, probably doing any of their exercises to, they want their tree cutting firm, would want clear direction, policy before they deploy So, resuming new business, no further. Committee reports from the previous week, economic development, towns.
Mr. Chair, we are, at our meeting, we was held at the town hall, we discussed the EDC goals I have in here through the New York Austin Act, they're basically five goals. Support the web selector in any way we can, if we can advance me, your website, encourage all the support, recognition of dot com businesses, support the Main Street program, the Economic Business Association, some of the attribution, Metro Center of Hampshire, the Goshen Industrial Park, be a proactive component for business retention and expansion, support entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship, and welcome, and re-mentering businesses for the town of Goshen. Mentoring, we've come up with a form, there's a brochure that we're going to meet with the new people that come into town. We've decided amongst the group that we're, he's going to take these groups on individually, one-on-one, welcome them one into town. There are a couple new businesses that have been coming into town, the Alpys Wire Shop which is in town already, Hubert's Clothing in the Shox Plaza are coming, a little bit of time, the Dollar Tree Store which are coming into the former Dollar Store in town. So, there'll be some activity coming up in the interim. The other thing that you heard earlier tonight was the grant, we had a discussion about the grant, as to when it gets here, we're going to try to work, put some goals for that, so we'll have that ready to go. And then the other thing, we talked about moving into the main board, you since you elected or appointed, Derek does a survey issue here, that's available, if you would like to look at it out there. And that's pretty much it, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, thank you. So, a lot of items that are concerning the mentoring program and brochure, are copies available at the town hall where somebody can visit?
Derek, can you help me ask this out?
This staff will be coming along.
There will be, yes, sir.
Thank you, Derek. And the other committee is capital improvement program? Silence. I guess there was no attendance at that number.
There was, again, I get caught here. We had the school department committee, we had a meeting with their attorney, they were working diligently on trying to produce a good, solid, strong budget. They talked about the library, meant the library coming, repairs immediately made to the library, some of the coatings around the edges needed to be changed and replaced. There was considerable discussion on that, as to how we go about selling it, what would we, what would we do to make it a long-term fix, so that we wouldn't have to come back and revisit that. They talked about elevator shaft, we work in the elevator shaft, a lot of the boards, a lot of the materials there, we brought in, so expect some work that needs to be done there as well, and that's pretty much it.
Quite good, you see how you need to get it covered.
Yep, we do cancel the July 5th one, we're going to have it on July 11th because of holiday, and we'll be picking up where we left off again.
Thank you, Mark. Before we, well, a motion for adjournment or break, is there any other public business that has to be discussed? And should there be any, anyone see a need for a non-public?
Yes. Yes, we need a non-public, and they're saying 91A3, Rome 2C, adversely affect reputation of someone other than a member of the board.
If I can remember the procedure, is there a motion to... Someone. Go in the non-public. Second, if, Selectmen have a sensation. Broke all, please?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Motion made and passed. We will adjourn to a non-public session, which will be in a different part of this building, and the building of the Selectmen's meeting will resume once we reconvene in the non-public session, and that's expected to be at 7 o'clock this evening, at which time we'll have a all-boards meeting, chairman of all the town boards, commissions, and We're continuing the board of Selectmen's meeting, for 11th of June. We had a public meeting with normal business from 6:00 to 6:45. The reason we adjourned for a non-public meeting, and then from that we took a recess, and now reconvene, so three minutes past 7:00. And we're now at the annual all-boards meeting. This is where the board of Selectmen invite in the chairs of the committees, councils, and commissions who serve this town, and to hear reports from them on particular subjects, and to have dialogue between all of us as it affects those subjects, so that we can be better prepared as we go forward into the next finishing of this year, if I'm right. We are meeting at the Grassmere Town Hall, and it has been newly, this, we're on the second floor, and newly renovated. I'd like to start off this activities this evening before we start having a dialogue with meeting members, have the historic history to explain what has happened here inside the floor of the Grassmere Town Hall. So, Melissa, first.
Okay, well, first of all, welcome everybody to the Grassmere Town Hall, we're very excited that our renovation project here is almost finished. As most of you probably know, this building was built in 1889. It was a school, it was a grand hall, it was a public meeting place, it was a district court, it was a dinner theater for a long time, people want to know that, there's picnic tables upstairs, little picnic tables, people would go up and have their dinner, and then come down here and see a show. So it's been, it's been a big part of our community for over a hundred, well, over 100 years. In 1985, or the mid-1990s, this room was closed for renovations, and we've been working ever since toward that end, and we are very happy to announce that it's going to open, hopefully by the end of this year, as once again be a public meeting place, and maybe hopefully a form yarn center. We're almost done, so bear with us, you can see, still see a few signs of the renovation going on, we have light fixtures to put in, sprinkler system to finish. One of the most exciting things about this room was we were able to restore all the hand-made stenciling around the building. And that, well, I'll talk about that when we get to the renovation, but in particular, that area around the stage was covered with a different painting, it's here, and when the stenciling came in, it found just a little smaller than the original stenciling, and managed to take off what had been covered, and restore the entire stencil to recreate the color and restore to what it had been originally. So, that's our little history of the building, like, so we're excited to have it open again and have it be part of our community life again.
And in one minute or less, what other respirations are in the future?
Uh, well, this is, this is phase five of six-phase project, and like I said, after this one, we'll be able to reopen it to the public. The sixth phase is still several years and much fun to reason them off, but it's in addition to the back of the building that will allow you to have access, have extra bathrooms, emergency exits, and some storage space.
And we are meeting in a room that was built for sound engineers worrying about acoustics, and so the video technicians have done their best to place microphones around the room to pick up our discussion. I've asked attendees here to, one speak at a time, because we've, we're very, we've known from, just before we started, as soon as two to three people start talking in this room, with solid walls and no carpet on the floor, the voices bounce around, so I hope the video of this should be moved, broadcast later will be fun. Before we begin our roundtable discussion and now explain some of those, what the dialogue is about, I'd like to introduce who is in attendance this evening, and I will call for the chair of the appropriate committee or commission to identify themselves, and I'll go down in the proceedings of the agenda, so the viewing, the viewers may have a similar agenda if you're watching too. Anyways, the attendees for the budget committee.
My name's Peter George Anderson, the vice chair of the budget committee, Phil Kiddo, I'm with everyone at the time. Thank you, Peter. Cable Television. Jason Cody, chair of cable. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. And CIP committee this evening.
Tim Redden, chairman of CIP, planning board member.
Thank you, Tim. Conservation commission.
Jane Walker, chair. Susan Tucker, vice chair.
So we've got chair and vice chairs, thank you both for coming. Economic development council.
Steven Mindlet, chair.
Evening, Steven. The Gulf Town Village water.
Harold Daniels, chairman of some food providers.
And the Grassmere Village water.
Tina Daniels, chair.
Library trustees.
Test France, member, representing our chair Lisa Ives.
Thank you. I see next to you is the library director. The park and rec commission.
Howard Silverball, chair.
Thank you, Howard. And Rick Wobhies next to you, park director. Planning board.
Tim Redden, chairman of planning board.
Evening, Tim. And representing rail trail is myself, David Pierce, I'm chair of that committee. SOR commission. I don't see Mr. Crean. If he comes in in a moment, we'll get up on him, Steve is out. School board. That's Phil Penkles, and he's not here. Solid Waste Commission.
Kathy Samard, chair. And I have Fred Rippon.
My last name is Fred Platt.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kathy, very long member Fred Platt, part of your commission. Finally, we get down towards the unsupervised and checklist.
Denise Lemay, chair.
Evening, Denise. Trustees of the trust funds. That would be Ken Rose, who's not here. And zoning board.
Kevin Rixton, chair.
Thank you, Kevin. Those were the committees, commissions invited, just to round out the total list of all the committees and the commissions that do help in town activities, but we also have cemetery trustees, ADA compliance committee, highway safety committee, and a joint loss safety Our annual town reports explain what all those committees do, who the other members are, and whether they're elected or appointed. This evening, we provided to the chairs of those committees and commissions two topics of discussion, which capitalized upon the two thousand twelve selectmen's goals. The selectmen's goals cover four broad areas, human resources, communications with the public, project management, and a budget. Those are the four broad areas. We also have a support for town committee members dealing with training and development programs. But of the four major programs, I'd like to focus our discussion this evening on communications with the public and what your committees are involved with endeavoring that effort. And also, we'll be covering the budget activities. In the email, we discussed the broad range of budgets, but it's competition with funding, and the issues dealing with the capital improvements program that we've exchanged in the last year or more, especially of capital improvements that pushed out for early years. I would want to start first with, of those two broad subjects, start going around to our committees and commissions for you to talk to and help that dialogue. Start with the communications issue. What, what is that, what activity, besides just being on public TV, government TV, other media, community, whole video report, broadcast, what other activities may be going on for helping the public communications work? I am open to whoever wants to speak, introduce yourself, and make, discuss those subjects. Some of the selectmen here will also fill in on other subjects too. Anybody here read it?
Jason Cody, chair. Thought it'd be obvious that we've tried to leave it off. We, I don't know, did you want us to go over objectives first, or do you want us to actually say what we communicate?
Yes, that would be appropriate, and then we begin.
Okay. I think overall, as the, our biggest thing right now is transition. I believe that counted off town is the process of finishing off hopefully soon, the cable contracts with Comcast. I believe when that ends, or that's the opportunity that Gulf Town should be taking to expand on their communication tool, which is Gulf Town TV. Right now, Gulf Town has three part-time people, both great individuals who do a great job, but even agreeing with them, and also overall committee, we've been discussing the need for a full-time individual. Father, you have us three individuals going in three different directions sometimes, trying to do, you know, the work, and the communication sometimes is tough to get all together. I think if one individual, a full-time individual, that can be streamed a lot better overall with schedule. Person's there, it's two to, two to ten some days, or longer stretches, so the, the heads of the departments can, you know, know these are the hours person's going to be in. Right now, currently, sometimes, if a person's on a Thursday, you know, if someone's there for two hours on Tuesday, it doesn't work out, it's not conducive to what needs to happen in this community. A lot of transparency is the big thing, everybody talks about transparency statewide, nationwide, that's the biggest thing everybody wants. I don't want to know what their money is being spent on, I don't want to know how things are going, and what big projects are happening. And GTV, overall, if you do that online web, if you do on the app, you can do the live, you can do the tape like we are today, and I think if we encourage that and expand on that, I think that's a very significant avenue that could be made, rather than, rather than. The emphasis, I think, also should be, and the committee is also discussing this, the emphasis on involving the school district with more events, covering more events, such as, you know, we had discussed parades, sporting events, which we already doing, arguing now the bigger, on a bigger scale, and to be able to accomplish this, of course, and that kind of ties into the budget aspect, you need more money. So, we are going to be coming up very soon with some requests to the selectmen to look at that aspect and see if we can try to discuss experience, GTV, positive, to help the foundation in this community, which everybody here does, you know, knows a lot of what's going on in the community, but a lot of people, such as, you know, when I first moved here, didn't know what was going on, even sometimes when I watched cable meetings, it was tough to kind of figure out what was going on, so I think involving, like I said, the department heads talking about their projects, so the voters will know what they're voting on. I think, when I go over the goals right now, and tell me if I'm wrong, some of the projects, I really don't know what they are, it's, and I haven't actually read them, I haven't actually watched the meetings, and it's still kind of difficult to figure out what's going on, so we need to start, you know, bringing that to the forefront to, that's one, one big thing, I think cable TV can bring to communication. And cable contract is essentially funded at a level of two hundred and sixty thousand currently right now, we're only at sixty-five thousand, so even if it was a move a little past a hundred, we're still not taking the whole pie, and we're still bringing, returning pie to the community for whatever projects need to be done.
That's a good overview. You, you mentioned three part-time.
Yep. Correct.
They must be quite booked up, just covering the government.
Yep.
Meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And then you find time for the community channel broadcast and.
Public access, yep. Yep. So that's, that's what it comes down, there's only so many hours that these guys can deal with the budget, so by expanding, if you expand over, if you expand what people can see at the public, is pretty much what it comes down to. It's, there's no, there's no way that we, we've hit the cap, no matter which way you look at it, no matter how we try to wrangle hours, we only have so many hours, there's no way to expand, the only way we're going to do that is by adding more hours.
Now, take advantage with the selectmen's goals are communications this year.
Yep.
So your endeavors will duck bill nicely and pretty many of them.
I hope that's the case.
For those, for those who are.
Yep, yes.
Any other board members want to discuss that? I'd like to, any other committees, councils, commissions, what are you doing with the public outreach, communication, group stuff? Yes, Kathy?
As you know, one of the things that the solid waste commission was tasked with this, the end of last year, beginning of this year, was to look at the pay as you throw program and whether or not that would be a good thing for the community to do, to get the word out there and educate people. We've done presentations at the Rotary Club and the Lions Club to get the message out there, and we also have a presentation on the DPW webpage. So right now, we're starting to talk about it, and as a matter of fact, tonight, we did write our presentation with us to, you know, show you what is going on, and, you know, show you that you really are already paying for your trash and your tax base, and we have ways to either save you money or maybe pay a little bit more, but you can be a little bit more efficient, and we can recycle more as a town. So at some point, we'll do our presentation, but that's what we're doing for communication, trying to get the message out to educate people, so instead of just, because I know the pay as you throw has been talked about before, and people go, oh, yeah, we talked about that before, we don't want to talk, we don't want to listen, and they kind of close down, but unfortunately, with the, the way the times are today, we really do need, need to take a educated look. I'm not saying it's the do-all, end-all, but it's something that we really have to take a look at.
I appreciate all that. I'm, I'm going to ask that your presentation come in between the.
Sure. No problem.
The two major topics we're going to discuss.
Yep.
We're just giving a preview as to what that's going to be.
Yes.
And the important thing, I know that solid waste commission is doing well on that field, is that how we do solid waste and recyclable collection in the town may be very good, may be very efficient, but nevertheless, you don't let status quo seem to be perfect and right, you're never going to say, is there.
Look at something else.
Any other better way of doing this, and then making a case. Monetarily, it could be better for residents, or it could be the same cost.
Right.
In which case, do we stay with, you know, the residents like to stay with the existing situation, or take one step forward to something different? But nevertheless, it's important to investigate what are the options, rather than just sit back and say, I don't see the change, it's not necessary.
Right.
So I think you could look into those options.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Mr. history.
I know you guys have started doing a column in the newspaper, right, for the selectmen, the last, one I saw was about economic development. Is that something, I'm just wondering how you're planning to use that, is that something where if any large boards want to appear in that, do you contact you? Do you guys contact us, or do you, are you going to do like each board and explain how each one works, or is it just going to be kind of hot topic issues, or?
Thank you, Elizabeth. We have set topics that the selectmen are going to do at the end of each month. The list, I don't have the list in front of me, and I'm not sure.
Actually, I think, which, do you say?
Yes. So, which, the, the board member responsible for that end of the month article in Gulf Town News, if it's in the bailiwick or one of your committees, commissions, councils, are there certainly share their thoughts and gather ideas.
Jason, Gulf Town, cable access can be actually sent every month, the cable, you know, TV, GTV article in Gulf Town News, if you contact Gulf Town News, I'm sure that you want to have to take that from, so if you're looking to just get one topic that you want, I think there would be more to have to get on the board.
Speaker, it's Jason, I was reading the Bedford Bulletin, and weekly now they're putting in everything that's on their cable access.
Oh, are they scheduled?
At their schedule, so that will also help people, I think.
Yeah, I think that's something that we need to look at, yeah. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to speak to you along, I'm going to tell you what the library does for communication from the sublime to the ridiculous. There is no stopping the library staff communicating what they're doing, so they start with everything from individual phone calls and emails to every card holder, depending on the lead of the patron, to the sandwich board out of the corner, to interior advertisements about anything that's coming up or any opportunities that are there, including celebrations of good news and needs of the library. They do live visits to other schools, they do the business expo, they work with the town committees for the community network, the youth forum, and Main Street. They run their own distinct website, which everybody knows, I'm sure. They run a weekly column in the Gulf Town News, they do a weekly e column in the Gulf Town Edge, they do commercials on GTV, which they coincidentally were on their own website to, to get a double hit. They, I think we're the first responders to Facebook, they do Twitter, I don't know what they do with Twitter.
Tweet.
They do Pinterest. Diane will explain any of those. So communication, we have in spades, we should, I just want CIP and the legislative to know that if our budget were based on words, we would be the richest department.
That's Gulf Town TV and the library, communications are your real name, so those are all appropriate activities, and the library staff is certainly out there in the front with multiple ways of communicating. I'm a card holder for the library, I've seen my email from the library multiply in the last two months. Yes.
Just wanted to let all the committees know that with Derek Warren's help, we reviewed our social media policy, and I just want to compliment the libraries, I think you really spearheaded, just very effective communication through the use of social media, and I think it kind of sparked us to take a look at that, and although we have not officially adopted the policy, I can, I think it's safe to say that the board is inclined to go ahead with using social media such as Facebook, it'll be a more of a situation, we're going to post things, we're not going to have active interaction, new people are allowed to post on your site, we're going to have a re, reframe from that, it's a, it's difficult to try to manage that, but for committees and different departments, if, if it needs to get posted, you're going to have that ability to, to do that, and I think that'll be a nice way to at least let people know what's going on, that can range from activities that are going on, meetings, to the fact that the dump, that transportation might be closed, there's a whole host of things that. There's a whole host of things that we can put out there. Um, and it's, it is one of the biggest message boards that, that we can ever have. So, you know, relying on that. So I, I hope that we'll probably adopt that in the next month, I'm hoping. And, uh, and we're simply going to give, what, we think about a six-month trial period? Yeah, see how it goes and tweak it as, as we go. Just wanted to let you know that...
Over the last two sessions of the board selection, we've reviewed a social media, um, policy. And last Monday, we sent it out to the department heads to, for their final review as to how they would utilize it. Any issues they would have from their viewpoint as to who would be involved, posting and controlling the current information. The summation.
And, and while I'm on that, that subject, just so everybody knows, and Chief Sullivan, I don't want to put you out on the spot here, but just to look, there is a new message board that went up. And it's beautiful. Um, that was paid for entirely by the Police Association, the town of Gostown did not, did not pay for that. And in speaking with a couple of the officers today, Chief, if you want to elaborate on it, it is a community message board and people would like to, if you want to share anything on that, has to do with communication.
It is, the, uh, the Police Association paid us, it's over twenty thousand dollars on that. Um, it's a great tool for us as a community and as a police department to get our messages out there. They can be changed momentarily on a computer laptop, gets the message out there for emergencies and any of that sort. So it's a community message board, government message board, and if we use that, get our message out there.
And with that, Chief, if you could also just expand a little bit on Nixle and the I Neighbor Initiative. If you could do a...
Certainly, um, Nixle, if you haven't heard or seen, nixle.com, sign up. It has the alerts, um, traffic alerts, accidents, crimes, fires, detours. We'll put it out on Nixle immediately. I can do it myself on the air by acting. Um, it's a community alerting device that we use, it's free of charge and it's free to sign up except for the texts that you receive if you pay for texts. Um, the third item we had is I Neighbor Program. And we've got officers assigned to each neighborhood in town. We develop little pockets on the trail of the Rochambeau Cross. Uh, you put that little section in there, there's an officer assigned to it. We've developed the I Neighbor blog, for lack of a better word, that you can go on. Say there's a bear over in that area, as an example. Uh, you can type in, or my officer will type in, with that bear sightings in the area of Rochambeau, just to keep an eye on the kids who may not want to play on the woods and something of that sort. So we've got a whole, a whole town like that, more interactive, trying to pass it off so the community to allow them to interact with it, so that we're not directly involved with the oversight. But then again, it's the neighbors, we're trying to filter as far as the neighbors being involved in that, which is depending on signing up for it.
Chairman, can I follow?
Please, Jason.
I just wanted to add to Diane's, if there were any communication glitches or needs that she felt were missing. And she said no, she was thrilled. But I remember sometime over the winter, um, it might have been the freak October storm, I don't remember, but town hall was closed, the library wasn't notified. And is there a way that when those things happen, that can go out maybe through Nixle so that, so that...
I'm sure it did, it did, yeah.
We never, not until after we were already open.
There may be some delays of order when we get it and send it out, but it did go off. Unfortunately, that snowstorm, I think, uh...
I don't remember if that...
I know, I remember the snowstorm, I was on the weekend, but it was one of the, uh, spring months maybe, and I had to actually be working as well for that.
So that does count now.
How good a point the emergency closing of some town facility is important for the summations. Who's, so Nixle Media or what Selectmen Rose was talking about, if other social media were felt in part. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
He's got the anecdotal thought, just sort of talking a little bit about the one that, uh, I've been on the board about three years and it seems that at this point, we have a very energetic board, good membership. And, uh, we have done a lot of good work on the website, creating, I think, work on getting the town's information out there. Derek Warren, uh, coordinated, has an excellent job. And we have a quarterly newsletter, we think is helpful in communication with the town.
We heard in previous, in the Selectmen's meeting this evening, a mentoring, or not, I don't know.
Yes, that's right, we have a mentoring pattern where we're trying to get out what town businesses and, um, you know, letting know that we're there, how, and do what we can to provide the...
This would be for new businesses, for senior businesses?
And, well, yes, mentoring is for the new business. As they come into town, each member will be assigned to a business as they come in to try that.
A member of the town member.
A member of the town member. To help them, you know, really let them know that we're there to support them.
Just, you know, I'm going to fill in some gaps, if, if that's, if that's okay. Um, for those of you who don't know, um, a lot of our information, vision, appraisal is online. So in case you did not know that, we embarked on that about a year ago. And that allows developers, if they want to take a look at a particular parcel, they can, they can go online. They can do it at two o'clock in the morning if they want. And that's something that before, we used to charge people for certain, certain data, now you don't. Uh, so we've lost a little bit of revenue, but I think hopefully we've made it more accessible, uh, to developers or for residents, they, they want that information. So it's cutting down our, on, on counter transactions in our, in our planning side of, of town hall. And hoping it allows people to, you know, to, to do, you know, some of those, those activities. So that's, you know, kind of a, an EDC, you know, type of, of thing that's going on.
GIS is also available.
Yeah, GIS is also available. And with that, which you probably let folks know in case you haven't been following our meetings, but, um, we were scheduled to have a flyover, um, this year. But unfortunately, there was delays with the vendor that was, uh, that we had hired. And you need no leaves on the trees in order to do this flyover. So we're going to crumble the funds and get it done next February or March, or who knows? There's, I don't think, I don't think there'll be a window for us this year. Um, and that, that needs to occur, they're similar, about every eight years, is that what they, about seven, eight years? Um, and again, that allows for, to get the most current mapping for folks who are looking to, uh, develop parcels in the town. And it also helps some of you, whether it be conservation, water departments, uh, whatever, whatever entities are out there. You can see the current GIS maps and it should assist you in, in some of your planning.
And I'll fill in some dialogue on that one too, of what Selectmen Rose has confirmed is with. From the town's homepage on the web, on the left, you see a link to maps. Opening that up, you can see a link for GIS Geographic Information System. And once you accept, uh, going to that link, which is a commercial vendor's mail, you can have the parcel boundaries of all of six thousand odd parcels in town. And, uh, and then you can also read the assessment card associated with all of those parcels. I use it quite frequently myself, uh, for Selectmen's meetings. We have issues dealing with parcels and, uh, we're given map number, lot numbers, but that's it. Now, you can go into the GIS database and, and do a search. Then I can see the nature of that parcel, who the neighbors are and where it lies. And, um, in the background, you can turn on a layout that has aerial photography, that Selectmen Rose was talking about. And right now, it's aerial photography. Derek, two thousand one, more, yes? And, uh, so we're, uh, we have approved a contract update that, with new aerial photography. And, uh, we were too late in the spring to do that before the leaves blossomed out. So it will be scheduled for very early next spring. Still on communication.
It's not really a comment, it's another question, sorry. Uh, and I'm going to put on my other hat because I'm also a member of Budget Committee. Uh, sorry, Peter. Um, for the last several years, the Budget Committee has, has made conscious decisions to not formally issue any sort of statement when we finish our work, until we do the public hearing. Um, so my question is, in my opinion, it's led to a lot of confusion because the projected tax number and the rejected, and the budget numbers are all left in the hands of whoever chooses to write into the paper or whoever wrote the article for the paper. Does everyone, does anyone have feelings about or thoughts about the idea that should the Budget Committee issue some sort of formal statement with the numbers? This is the projected tax rate, then we're done? Or a statement in conjunction with Board of Selectmen and the School Board, providing those to the public?
I think that, uh, I'll go back over here. I think what that boils down to is you, you finish all your deliverations. And then if you're citing other letters to the editor, are sort of defining the battle, independent of where or what direction you like to go in. And then sometimes it's playing catch-up. Jason, come on back.
At first, I would have seen you guys definitely, but you, you guys work very carefully. The numbers are better than any single person that can write a article, to be honest with you, because you've seen them all run over again. And I think overall, I think, I find it to be, just like the Selectmen, have their feelings about certain issues. I don't see why any of you that should express your feelings. Help me as a citizen to know exactly what's going on. Uh, that's just my...
Chair of Budget Committee, Jason.
No, I'm sorry.
Peter.
I can appreciate your feelings on this and trying to get something out as a joint statement or a statement. But the task that goes into formulating this is, and a lot of times it's very controversial, whilst we're sitting on meetings, as you know. To come up with a formal statement on a regular basis or at the end of the... You really can't do that until you've had the public hearing and got the public's input. Because that's when we, the Budget Committee, comes up with their final statement. You can get your information on the budget on a regular basis, uh, third Tuesday of the month by watching GTV and, and that information is here. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of get to take in those negotiations. And that's what they are, they're supposed to be negotiations. Um, the Budget Committee feels that their job is to give the best bang for the buck for the taxpayer in the town. That's, I think that's to take care of the schools, the infrastructure, um, and do whatever we can. Prioritize, um, different projects, that's what our job is. Um, that's what I feel our job is. And I feel, I think if you research it, you'll find that's, you know, the statute says is our job, you know, to, uh, a budget.
Phil, and Peter, you make, you make really good points. Um, and I think the task becomes, if you're going to go out there, because it is an ongoing process in the way Peter has described, you have to make a decision about, um, what point it makes sense to do that at. Uh, because I think, I think there are a lot of people who've sat around at a variety of different tables in here who will tell you that in one year doesn't necessarily reflect what happened last year or what might happen next year. And there really are things that have to be budgeted process that take place sort of well into the eleventh and then you're twelve and sometimes the one-thirtieth, forty, that one, that might not get captured depending upon when you release a statement, either a declaration or an opinion about where you're going to end up. And so I think trying to figure out where the balancing point is, is not going to be the easy task. So if you decide to go out there and do that, if that's a position that you want to take, um, that goes a little bit beyond the information in real time, um, in fairness to everybody who's at the table, finding that exact point at which you make a declaration that everybody's on the same, that everybody's agreement with, as opposed to influencing, um, well, that's a top balancing act.
Solid, solid waste, correct, please?
Yeah, I'm just a, just a citizen tonight, but once the Budget Committee is ready to a public hearing, it has a budget to present, I think it's a mistake not to present it. Uh, make, make a, a statement about what the budget is, school and town side. With a caveat, it's preliminary subject of public hearing, a change by the Budget Committee after public hearing. But it's just communications and I think it, it will tell a lot of, uh, town people, well, they should be concerned about. Uh, and, and it begins with something to come show that you're for, if you're going to show it. But at least they have the idea that somebody else has a pin in the picture, you are. But we do that, right? Do you?
Yeah, we do that.
Yeah, this, this, before there's a public hearing, before the public hearing, that number is published.
No, it's not.
Well, it's available.
Only by watching our meetings.
Okay, we do this. And if he goes to the public hearing, it's available, it's in print.
So, Peter, there's probably going to be discussion in your committee here in the future as the amount of, the amount and the scope of information being released.
And I think we'll...
You can, you can watch through that.
We'll take it to the Budget Committee and, and bring it forward. Maybe this, we could put something together, but it will be something, I feel so, it's going to be something in the middle of the classroom. If that's what you're going to do.
So that's a challenge.
You always give somebody false hope in, in December that what they were hoping was going to happen is going to happen. Because that could change January third at a meeting. So if you publish something in advance saying, "Okay, the Budget Committee's going along with this." But, you know, that would for the police department and the highway department comes in and says, "Oh, man, we really need this." Well, then you got to take it from this guy, who thought it was all in set, so. I mean, you just can't, uh, give somebody a false hope that their project or something they're looking at has been finalized and okay by putting it in print. Because that'll come back and say, "Well, it was in print, I saw it." And that could change at the last moment.
Well, there's, uh...
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, something the Budget Committee's probably going to talk about, Peter. And, uh, we resolve as to what, the scope of information to release and when. Because you certainly mentioned lots of dates that are sensitive and the schedule of releasing the budget. Back to communications in general.
Can I just add to that discussion? Um, I think last year, there was a lot of confusion regarding the estimated increase in the tax rate. Elizabeth's right, a lot of people went in and moved different, um, tax rates projected. And there was no consultation to the Budget Committee's platform at that point in time to see what is an accurate estimate. And so I'd like to see that happen, so there won't be any confusion.
And one, sorry, one final note. I have heard from many, many people who said that they simply did not vote because they were so confused about what the budget number was and what the taxes, impacts that we did. They were just so overwhelmed that there were so many conflicting, so much conflicting information that they just stayed on.
Yes. No, just to help you out, I've been here for about a year and I can't remember this happening. Did you follow it, if you can, if I can? When, before the, uh, you know, the budget, before we vote, is there a reason why the Budget Committee hasn't come or the Selectmen haven't come and said, "This is what you're voting on, this is done, shut over," something like that? Communicating to the public, specifically saying, "Hey, this is..."
Jason, well, well, that's the second half of our discussion this evening is focusing more on the budget process. And, um, but yes, there's a, a lot of events that dovetail into each other, that build on each other. And, um, uh, Peter was rightly concerned. You, you paint a certain picture at one point in the whole schedule, sometimes that might get incorrectly absorbed.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking about the thirty-four, what's happening, what's going to go down. You've got to pretty shortly balance for that, the numbers, but, uh, you're not going to change it too much from there. I was just thinking a couple of weeks before, you know, had, had some, two chairs sat down and said, "Hey, this is people voting on it." Besides meetings, because sometimes it's tough to ink out certain sections. I've watched, I'm the executive director for Manchester, I've seen thousands of meetings. And it's just tough to, to pick out, you know, certain numbers that fly in between discussions about what's going on. But if the two chairs sat down and just said, "Hey, this is what's going on, this is what, this is what the impact's going to be. And this is going to be voting on in two weeks, you know, this is what it is." This might be a weird, weird...
This might be a weird, weird bringing a very fresh perspective on your job at Manchester and the, you know, budgetary information, that city, that, Peter.
That information, this time, reads in advance. So it is a, that, that's after the public hearing, the final number's done, and there's two numbers on the ballot. There's the proposed budget, and then there's the default budget. Those are the two numbers that are on the ballot. When you go to the, when you go to the polls, you're going to vote yes or no on the budget.
Not, 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 I just, those two numbers, I would love to see, you're so knowledgeable about those situations, I would love to see you sit down on it and discuss it specifically.
Oh, it's the scun for one.
Bring it, summarize it into something that people can see and watch on that.
I'd like to, Chris, please.
Come on.
I, I think the Budget Committee or Selectmen, School Board, they do talk about the numbers. The problem the last couple of years, two years specifically, is revenues. And the revenues from the state have been wildly, all over the board. Okay, it's been a roller coaster ride. So, you know, in fairness to all the people around this table, we have set budgets, we've looked at realistic revenue projections on the town side, but when your, your, your school funding fluctuates, you know, one to two million dollars, if your shared revenues or your rooms and meals distributions, if they change hundreds of thousands of dollars, that is, and that's after the fact, and you probably read in the paper all the time, it's like the legislature makes decisions after local boards have set their budgets. And no matter how well you try to explain it, if the state makes a change and they decide to cut revenue to a local district, school district to the tune of a million dollars or 1.3, that's one dollar on the tax rate that you didn't anticipate. And that's what, and that's what we get caught up in. We get caught up in, well, so-and-so at the state said that they're not going to pass this bill, and if that means they're going to give you less revenue, and then so, you have one person who's saying, well, if it's based upon this revenue, it's going to be this tax rate. If it's based upon that revenue, and you're not going to escape that. This is the nature of the beast. I mean, and Peter, you and I have been doing this for a long time, it's going to be that way from now, it'll be that way 30 years from now.
It's over.
Well, not for us. One more year.
Communications, Rick, probably need to wrap that in.
To the lighter side. Conservation Commission, we are present at townwide events, we usually have a table, we have town maps, we get really good response, people come and they like to look at the maps and what conserv land and see what our house is and how it relates to the town itself. So basically, that's how we communicate. We have, if we put something in the Gostown News, we'll be able to highlight it, we will advertise for the Gostown News, and we have maps, not maps, of hiking trails in Town Hall. And recently, this past year, we've had a volunteer who has cleared the outlooks and put up.
You refer to a vista.
Vista, and he's put up maps. If you go to the top of the mountain and you walk the perimeter trails, you will see he has the vista map, so you can look and see what mountains you're looking at in the distance, which are really great, and trails that are well marked and are well used.
I think one of the atmospheric mountains is almost totally water precinct land, the other one is conservation.
Right, coming up, south, south town.
Conservation. Both of them have extensive hiking trails. On Mountain Road, there's a bollard board at the head of the driveway leading into the reservoir, as well as you mentioned, the website maps. Thank you for bringing up those recreational opportunities for the town. And for encouraging the distance. Thank you. Second.
Yeah, I deleted it.
What we currently do, pretty much, is what Rick, he writes an article for the Gostown News and our website. He's done a good job upgrading the website, all the ones are on the website now. Just last one, we had a discussion on racing social media, which was interesting because he told us that meeting, that they're developing policy for social media, because we're extremely interested in upgrading our communication through Twitter and Facebook page. Because of the high volume of usage in our programs, we're looking at ways to most efficiently communicate our programs, our meetings, our sites, our cancellations, et cetera, into Parks and Recreation Summer Program, for example, we're looking at, instead of the traditional ways that you sign up for the trip or just to get to the Parks and Recreation Building at 8 o'clock, we're looking at maybe trying to do online presence for that kind of stuff, too. So we're eagerly awaiting a social media policy, and at that time, we're looking to upgrade that fully to Parks and Recreation. And we're also looking into putting up a sign up on the Parks and Recreation Building, trying to get someone to move on out of the precinct.
We do use all the other vehicles, too, the Gostown Edge, the other, Gostown Day, Gostown Edge newspaper. The other thing that we started doing more on was using our own, what we created in email base. Now, for registration, everything that we do, we have our own email base. So what we can do is do its own email blocks, you know, to a, set a group of people that like the interest in a certain activity, kind of doing that type of thing, too.
Who else will be developing this, first of all, is someone who's on the program, is interacting with them. And people, again, can sign up through email notification, you know, my direction, the text section, send a text notification. So.
Oh, yeah, concert, there you go, yeah. 2/23, 2/23, after you run the gala in the morning, at 8:30, you're done around 9:30, then you can wait around and go and enjoy a concert at the Gostown High School, the softball field, at 5:00 and have some ice cream, enjoy that wonderful ice cream after a nice long run, and listen to the voodoo rock.
I said 6:30.
Oh, 6:30.
6:30.
You get different ice cream, you get a little ice cream, you get prime, you get red, it's going to be all set.
Who's sponsoring?
The Gostown Mines Club and Parks and Recreation, it says things.
Coming together. And then another one's in August as well, at Boymar, and that'll be at the 18th, same time.
So bring him on, cheers.
Yes, and in a relative shape.
Thank you for communicating with us.
I think, I think we all, all do a very good job communicating. It's, it boils down to individuals of where they seek their information, and we can't handle that. I mean, that we don't really know, is where is that individual person going to grab their information? So I think, I think all of us do a wonderful job of getting that information out, but it's just on whether that user is going to gravitate to that vehicle. And that's what I think we have to kind of look at, what vehicle do they do? Everybody answers something different. Everybody around this table is getting their information, maybe it's the Union Link, I don't know, maybe it's the New York Post, you know, maybe there's nothing to do with whatever it is. Time, New York time. Mr. Gammons.
The water precinct has several avenues that we follow. Unfortunately, a lot of the work that we need, we can't post in the paper before because it's a water pipe that goes on the mine press at 2:00 in the morning and things like that. But we do have announcements that we make on a regular basis because we flush fragments four times a year, and we send samples of our water to Concord on a regular basis, the PR, the water is our own, to check everything out, to make sure we're in accord with the requirements of VDA and a whole bunch of other organizations that are up there. And the, we send, we submit a report to our subscribers at least once a year, listing the average results of all of these tests and things that have words with forty letters in them.
Alex, let me put you just a tad bit on the spot, does precinct have a website presence?
Not yet, we are working on it, yes.
Because there, there is information about precinct, that just general information on your events and.
Yes.
To defend your precinct, that would be useful. So, I encourage you to keep going down that line.
We have been giving it some thought and figuring out a way to do it with the budget, of course. Our budget is money that we raise ourselves, we don't get it on dime from the town. And when we set up our budget, it's pretty much, I mean, almost extrude stone, this is what we're going to do in a couple of years from now, we're going to replace a truck, which means that our maintenance budget that year is going to be diluted. And it just has to be, because we only have so much to work with. We enjoy it, and we welcome people to come to our meetings. It's the second Tuesday, the chapter's meeting tomorrow, right? The Water Works, we have our own fast state, they're all welcome.
Though the, the voting members that attend that meeting is, the public comments, they will. Please.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to follow up now, just to put on, put on my other hat is the chair of the rail trail development committee, it's a follow-up to Park Department and the other content field with Conservation and Hiking. I personally knew that the rail trail was one of the future parks within the Park and Recreation fields, and the Selectmen have made a decision along that line as the rail trail becomes developed, it transitions from public works oversight of development into the Park and Rec Department or Oversight. And the communications about all of that development and the, the facilities and along the rail trail, we rely right now on volunteer organization, Friends of the Gostown Rail Trail, and they disseminate their information through the website, gostownrailtrail.org. And it's a, every six months, a spring and fall newsletter put together by a professional person covering all the events and developments along the rail for residents to know about. And maybe I'll quick, Rick, on the spot, is there a link from your site that would be appropriate to answer?
No, no, no.
So, that's a good, you're just out there in the future.
Yeah, we're working on that, just to, we're getting, we're coming in slow, putting up all the different organizations, athletic organizations, support, the esports organizations, things, and then volunteer organizations that scout everybody, you just put links.
Yeah, we've talked about that. You, now that we actually are having people drive to the website to get information, of all the departments here, you probably have the most community activities, you know, volunteer and nonprofit organizations dovetail up in your department with all the activities and programs right here. Any closing comments on communications? Bill, who's your board?
My apologies, I got here a little bit late, and I'm a gosh, a little bit late. Just a couple of things, I think the School Board is taking advantage of many of the same opportunities that are provided to them. All the schools have websites, the SAV has a website. All the documents that you might want to see that have anything to do with the district, you can find on those forums, take advantage of newspaper. We have actively discussed social media. We haven't landed in a place yet, and part of the reason for that is one of the points that Mr. Bruce made was, sort of how do you manage this piece? When you look at finite resources, what are you going to budget in order to manage that? And are you going to remove it from another area in order to add? So is it a cumulative thing that you look at, or is it merely, I need to have this, it's another way to get to folks who might use this particular media, and therefore, I'm going to take dollars from one place to put them here in order to reach those people who may not be getting the information in another way through one of the other media outlets. So it's been an interesting and ongoing discussion, both from managing the budget piece and how you use finite resources. We're pretty active, one of the other things that we've taken on doing that produced some really good results in the first year was Citizens Academy. I imagine I'll do it next year, I would invite any of you to attend. It is a five-month program that educates you on various elements of the operation of the school district, including budgeting and culminates in a tour of the school, of a school. It turned out to be a wonderful, marvelous process, we got really good feedback from it. The other thing that we're going to be doing, unless something changes wildly, is that we're going to be talking with the community a little bit more about our buildings, and so you'll see a higher level of community involvement and participation and some feedback. So, we're wrapping up.
I'd like to finish our first agenda on communications. Any closing comments from participants here?
Just a couple of minutes. One, you know, all good ideas, a lot of good ideas out there. This year, this year tonight, Dick Campasano came to us about a month ago and said, hey, can you, can you put your selection's packets on the web? So it's really hard to kind of follow along, while we already scan in our packets, it's a matter of taking out any non-public information, which isn't all that tough. And now, people can follow along, and they see whatever we have, people can see as well. So, again, that keeps the transparency going and, and if you have any ideas that are like that, you know, certainly let any of, let any of us know, or people on the School Board or Trust Library, whoever it is, get those ideas out there. And last but not least, I think we'd all be remiss as we end on communications, when we talk about GTV, thanking Dick, you did that for such a long time. GTV was a tremendous communication vehicle, and will be continuing to the future, but I think it's important that we acknowledge you, you started it, it was your vision, and you got it off the ground, Dick, so we all want to thank you for. And I think we'll probably, it might change in the way it is right now, but, you know, appreciate all that you've done for the town, and certainly, we're communicating a lot better with GTV than we did before we had it, so thank you.
I just want to tell you, one of the most enjoyable things in the past 17 years is getting the DVDs from the library with their so-called commercials. I got to tell you, talk to them, and you all should be doing it, and they need to be applauded for excellent work there.
Fred.
I need a second, two seconds, one.
This is your two-second warning, really. Before we transition this discussion for the last hour over into budget and competition and funding and CIE, we've asked the Solid Waste Commission to show their five or six new graphs, I hope no more.
Yeah.
On the initiative that they're researching, and that's, it's a variation on Pay As You Throw, so when viewers watching this, whatever you thought knew Pay As You Throw meant, please discard that totally.
Rescind, please.
Listen to a new variation that may have, may have been beneficial, at least for a research.
I just wanted to say, this is, this, well, I can do the best I can, maybe to show some of those, you hear my voice, okay. I've, we, I've been on the Solid Waste Commission for a long time now, and we've been asked by a couple of previous boards of selection to push Pay As You Throw, and I've had my hat changed for me. Gostown News has beaten up its mind before explicit any facts, it's a hustle of negative advertising, and so we're trying a different, because we were asked again last year, by last year's Board of Selection.
That's great.
Last year's Board of Selection to try it again for last year, and we said, no way. Let's take it a year, go to, go to, go to thought leaders and see if we can't get the message across before people react major. And I frankly would rather talk about the eternal revenue code or the, the industry is, but we'll try this, this Pay As You Throw again. And this is the presentation we put together. Why is, why Pay As You Throw? Because as a homeowner, you have choices to what you do for Because as a homeowner, you have choices to what you do for trash and recycling. And like other commodities, electricity, oil, gasoline, it's built based on volume. Should be. It's a proven potential for savings to homeowners because they have control over what they do. It's an incentive to recycle. Now even, now roughly 32% is recycled. It could be 55 or 60 with the right incentives. It saves everybody money. It's good for the environment and all that stuff. And right now, the selectmen provide, the town provides recycling only to single and duplex, thin cam and duplex. And with Pay as You Throw, there'd be, it would be no longer a business center. It's expanding the process on recycling and trash to businesses, which could say businesses are bundled and a multifamily. Because it would no longer be a tax burden associated with it. And for the Gostown DPU, they say there's more consistent planning. And it's important to replace it because it would come out of a dedicated fund without that. We go through the budgetary process every year. But why? Again, isn't it free? No, it's not free. It's, you're paying for it now. It's included in your tax bill. So what's one people saying? It's free, isn't it? No, it's not. You're paying for it. What's broken? You know, it seems to be working okay. Well, there's no one's left to recycle except the two people's public spirit. And listen, there are a few people who are public spirit, but they're what? Who just don't care and won't care unless they have skin in the game. And so people would have appropriate incentives to save money by recycling. And if they choose not to recycle, they'll pay for it. No moral judgment. It's their choice. And people would have convenience of different sizes of totes. Right now, there are 65-gallon totes out there for majority for recycling and trash. We do all our 95-gallon totes for recycling only. And as our trucks improve, it can handle different sized volumes. So the personal choices are made by individual or paid by that person and not shot down at the community essentially. So you're not paying for your neighbor's cents. You're paying for your own if you have any. So that's why. And the proposal is a subscription service and I've got the numbers up there. So if, for per week for trash, for 65 gallons, you have now be $3.71. And for recycle, it'd be $0.56 per week. And of course, that'd be a people that didn't build. The details will be worked out. So that's a cost out of your pocket. You're not now paying the $3.71 or $0.56. But you can cut that cost by cutting the size of the tote. If you get a 35-gallon subscription for trash instead of a 65-gallon, you pay one-time fee for the container, which is $39, but then from then on, it'd be $2 a week rather than $3.71. This is ignoring the savings and the taxes, and that's what's a creep. Because already you're paying in your taxes for different amounts based on the value of the home. And those amounts are shown. It's $146.60 a year for a $175,000 home, up to $230 for $0.56 for a $275,000 home. This is the little matrix. The number to concentrate on first is the middle number, 65-gallon trash, reading down the left side, and a reading across 65-gallon recycle. The number they showed you earlier, most for $22.11 subscription fee per year. If you're doing what you're doing now, for 65-gallons trash and recycle. But you could cut to a 35-gallon trash and cut the number to $132.97. Or you could be anywhere else in that matrix. I won't run through all of them to get the idea. And we picked three different family home size, family homes, valuable family homes that we can pay the savings to. This is a matrix I got from town of assessing department. And we picked $175,000, $225,000, $275,000 homes to cut the comparisons to only three. And that pretty much covers the gallon value of homes. You've got some down at $100,000, which is an empty plot of land. But anything with anybody living on it's got to be in that mostly in that range. And so there's a net benefit or cost for a $175,000 home, which is not paying its fair share because of the va, smaller value of the home. For a 65-gallon tote and recycle, it's going to cost them a net $75.43 by going to the subscription service. But they can save money if they go to a 35-gallon trash and save $13.71. It does not do as good as something. And they could go to a 35-gallon recycle too and save even more. So and negative number means your saving money. So and the positive number means the cost. As you go up in value of the home, they see better savings because the larger ones are paying greater freight. So the middle one, a $225,000 home, net cost of $33.52, the middle one for 65, $65. But you can cut to a 35-gallon recycle and save $55.52. Going on to the tour of $75,000 home, you're saving even more. Not save $39. And you're saving even more if you go to a 35-gallon trash. Save $97.53 a year then. So that's it. I present this to you to look for feedback. I said, we've printed this twice before. We had our hands handed, hands handed to us. We're trying again to put it on terms of dollars and cents. We can save money. See if this applies, if there's anything we should do to change the presentation. If there's no totally negative against you thought leaders, we know where I'm going anyway. I'm not going immediately. You have a hand up there.
Yes, Bill, first, or who's starting?
Fred, I just have a quick question.
Okay.
I don't know the rest of the numbers.
Okay.
But is there a way to evaluate whether this is a regressive tax system? And the only way that I can think of to do that is if there were a way to gauge income based upon value perhaps. And I don't know about some of the town colleagues.
I don't know.
Because let's say the average family composition of a $175,000 home is six people. And the average family that lives in a large home is two people. Their ability to shoulder or deserve.
But I don't know.
No, I understand that. But I'm almost there. And I'm not really looking for an answer now. I'm simply wondering if that is data you can collect. Because I think part of, part of any analysis, probably I would look at whether or not, even on a surface, it really does look like a fair share model, if there is an element of a dent regress. That's all.
I hear you and we'll try to look into it. One thought that crossed my mind is the six-person family. Right now, maybe stuck. I'm going to bring it to the recycling station, the transfer station, because they haven't got big enough totes. Now the six or eight-person family, now we can get a net. Oh, no, there's all kinds of discussion. They're paying more, but it's work performance. They don't want to bring it down.
It's not a position statement. It's simply analysis.
Elizabeth, please.
I have two questions. If you can, I would think of a catchy name, Catch Your Name and Pay as You Throw. Because when I hear Pay as You Throw, I instantly think that I'm going to be having to cart my own garbage through the dump every week. And it turns me off. My other question is, you gave sort of what this saved, this is all in terms of sort of personal costs, which is probably going to be the most effective when you're thinking this. But what would this save the town?
The overall goal is to take the trash out of our budget and make it self-sufficient, like the E and T part of our budget is. It's so that we can make money on the recyclable part. So therefore, funding our budget so that when it comes to a time like C I P, we need a new trash truck or whatever, that we don't need to look at the town as a total tax burden. That this is going to be itself running.
The answer is it costs the town nothing or saves the town anything. Because these are, these costs, the subscription fees were meant to recover the cost of the service.
Correct, okay.
And it needs to be emphasized that those subscription costs amortizes the future purchase of a vehicle.
Correct.
So all other costs associated with it.
The whole scope of providing services are all wrapped up in what you're proposing as a model of a subscription service.
Right, the better you are.
That's where you're going to benefit to the town.
Right, and the better you are at recycling, the better soldier you'll be, or for lack of terminology.
If you have a sexy term, we'll listen to it.
I just have a young tongue in my head. It's a peddly. I don't want to take my own garbage.
I mentioned the same thing to the committee here, Elizabeth.
Yes, Selectman Rose.
Well, you know, two things. One, my, one of my concerns, I think one of the reasons why I think the board wanted this to be discussed was, my concern, my own concern, is this going to be another one of these zip code issues where we try to take the pulse and then all of a sudden overwhelming the voters. I mean, the folks in Barnardville did not want their zip code changed. And do we want to expend all that energy on something that may not get that public enthused about? So that's why we wanted everybody's opinion and please share it. The second thing that I wanted to throw out, an idea was, in case some of you did not know, Selectman Adam shared this with us at our last meeting. But we were entertaining the concept of going into a co-op called the Concord Co-op for our recyclables. And unfortunately, that has hit the dust. That would have been a considerable cost savings for us because in terms of our, in order to bring the recyclables, currently we bring them to Charleston, Mass. It would be a lot shorter hauling distance. And we were also going to get a more favorable return on our recyclables because it was a nonprofit. What I think that there's an opportunity here for some of the groups to focus on energies. And that is, I personally think that we have at least one, if not two sites in Gostown. That could be a co-op where we could either do something similar to Concord where we bring in a company. And I think there's a couple of locations. One is on the back road. And again, we have to work with Manchester. But Manchester is trying to do recycling themselves. So there may be some discussion there. The other one is economic development that we're talking about in 114, the, what's that word? It's near the Bible, that's right.
Gentlestones.
Gentlestones. So there's opportunities there for one, getting something on the tax rolls, generating money. It would substantially reduce our recycling. We'd get more money forward. We're going to have, you know, rather than having three-hour trips to Boston to bring it, it'd only be, it'd be nothing essentially. So this could be a big win-win. We can get tax revenues. We can see our costs go down. Personally, I'd rather see the Solid Waste Commission and our collective energies work on something like that, which I think would have hundreds of thousands of dollars of implications than try to work on. If I had to choose, now, had the Concord Co-op gone forward, it'd be a different story, but.
Well, probably there's discussions with someone else to, yeah, to do just that.
I think, I think these are, these are things that collectively, you know, there are, I'm thinking of Steve and Tim and a few other people who have, you know, influence, you know, with Southern, you know, New Hampshire planning or just other entities where we could try to bring, this would be bringing a big business in.
Well, I also said that we need to, a point needs to be made as far as what people recycle. And as you know, I don't remember, maybe it was last year, when we had the dirty trash problem. You know, I'd like to bring up again that people are still throwing kitty litter and adult diapers into their, their recycle.
Adult diapers, Bill.
But you didn't catch me there.
But no, I mean, that's just not sense. I mean, that really shouldn't.
Selectmen Rose bringing up the fact of the co-op, Concord, their board of directors, like you said, had made a decision not to build a brand-new facility.
Yeah, that's what they're still doing though.
And to handle, it was, I guess on the order of almost 30 communities had signed up to participate in bringing recyclables there. Our director of public works is known to be an innovator. And he has reached out to the communities that had intended to participate, saying, let's not shut, let's not end the deal. He's sponsoring a group to get together and they figure out what might be the next step in these communities.
I did want to make sure I was clear what Selectman Rose was saying. He's saying pull a fight on this. I'm working on a call.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I would love to know what the community's feeling is on this. Because just like, there were plenty of great reasons to change the zip code. There were. But ultimately, it was, it was defeated two to one. And there are plenty of great reasons to go this route too. But it takes a lot of energy and it takes a lot of commitment for people to go this route. You're changing the mindset of what people think, as Elizabeth said. It's like, it's perceived as a negative, even though it really isn't. So do you spend, with finite amount of resources and energy, do you spend it on this? Or do you spend it on something else, knowing that you have that finite?
This was at the direction of the last year's board of selection.
I understand that. But like anything else in business, things change, you know?
Okay. Need to wrap up this and go into the next item.
Just a quick feedback, that's what they're looking for, is feedback. Those of us that have been around and involved for a few years have heard different stories and different scenarios that, let's try this, let's try this. Our Co-Man with recyclables, we're going to Canada. We're going to save a ton of money. Obviously, that didn't work. So now we're doing something different. I, personally, I can't support another program because it doesn't, doesn't really look, from what I've seen, that it's going to save me a lot of money anymore again, you know? Instead of going to switch to this person, to this person. We've got to come up with a certain plan and we know what's going to work and we're going to stick with it. Co-Man with recycling recyclables, what, five years' rule? Six years' rule? That failed. Now I'm going to try something else.
Didn't fail.
Obviously, it must have.
Jason and Gable.
Yeah, the man, the gentleman tried to do this twice. And the perspective of the citizens was absolutely horrendous. They will not, they will not go along with the field it's in now. Even though the town visited, players had brought up, discussed wonderful ideas. Citizens, all the elected officials outright about it. They refuse to pay, even though they're paying the taxes. It's almost like an entity that's over PR paying anyways, that they refuse to pay the bags and the service to do that because they feel that, in the negative aspect, is that, okay, they're going to take away this, but they're going to put something else in. They're going to shop them more. It's going to be up to them in six years. And now all of a sudden, I got to accept that I'm paying for here. Plus, I'm not paying them almost six years. So I'm just throwing that out there. Not saying it's a bad idea. It's just perception is going to be very different to making a lot of connections.
And last comment.
My only comment, Fred, is directed toward your presentation on the many variations on the theme of how it's improved. I get what individual townsfolk can still use of the transfer station. Or I think it's associated if I have a special one that cleaned up my basement and led to the transfer station. Rather than use my.
Good point. Nothing changed.
Secondly, you don't have to answer. I'm just telling you what I didn't say. Secondly, I see nothing on any kind of cost assurance that if I buy into a 35-gallon tote, I am committed to that for one year or three years, or I can't buy two 35-gallon totes for the holiday season, or what options I have as it goes to work. Thirdly, I would like to see other ideas the commission entertained in order to bring this one forward. So that we thought of Phil's idea and Jason's idea and Peter's idea and the ideas that we've heard for 30 years and why this is the best idea and therefore roll it out. Thank you.
Okay.
And then put it on Facebook.
Thank you for the big ask and the possibility of how Solid Waste Recyclables could be paid for and subscribed to rather than through property taxes. And to wrap up the next half hour, 45 minutes, I'd like to go into the second end item, and that's a dialogue on our budget situation coming up in the future six months, seven months. We also know that there's competition for funding between the schools and the town. And we also are both involved with C I P expenditures. And there's been a variation on C I P activities over the last couple of years. Whether the objects being bought are remaining in C I P, which is in the general operating funds, or it becomes separate articles as we go around the video. So another dialogue and discussion. Perhaps one of the, of lead off, some of the selectmen want to lead this off and put some views out. And the committees can follow up, please.
Well, just being the budget committee rep, I'll start it off. You know, one of the largest drivers of our budget is personnel, human resources costs. And I'm sure everybody you know that is probably somewhere between 70%. And of that cost, the leading driver of the last eight, five to 10 years has been health insurance. So the board of selectmen is going to be looking at health insurance once again for our, for our town employees. But I can tell you that on average over the last five years, it's been 10% increase. We've had more, we've had a little less, but it's been about 10%. We've had more, we've had a little less, but it's been about ten percent. When you look at the overall budget, you'll see that, for the most part, the last five years, we have been not doing as many capital improvement-type projects or expenditures in order to sustain the operating budget. I'm not going to speak for the whole board here, I'm going to speak for myself. That's not sustainable. You know, there are certain things that you have to do from capital improvements basis, whether that be fire apparatus, police cruisers, roads, things of that nature. And you can't keep on going to the CIP to balance your books with your staffing. So, certain things have got to give. So, then you look at, okay, what can we do to be, you know, to be more efficient? And I think we've embarked on a lot of these things, just little things that many departments have done. The library went down hours of operation, you know, using technology, we're able to reduce, you know, staff. We went down a person in town on the building department because our building permits and our building activity was down. I know the school department, Philip, you can speak to it, but you have certainly not replaced teachers, and with student population changes, I know those things have occurred as well. But, you know, the big thing is just how are we going to manage, you know, some of these operating expenses, some of these largely which we have no control. We're going to be going out for bids on our oil, and we hope to get those back. We go in with the SAU on our oil bids, well, those, those have gone up dramatically as well. So, you know, when you see, you know, the, the average, you know, cost per gallon though from say, two dollars and eighty-nine cents up to three sixty-nine or something, and you're consuming a couple hundred thousand dollars of fuel, you have to take that money from somewhere to pay. And all of you have that, whether you're the Board of Departments or the School Departments, those of you who have to deal with budgets, you, you know, you recognize that. So, you know, the question is, you know, how can we do more with less? Selectmen Adams, that sort of steal your turn here. That's really what, you know, what the goal is, and, and what can we reasonably defer? And how can we operate? Again, I'm going to, a couple of years ago, the Board of Selectmen kind of did a hybrid approach on some of our roads. So, rather than doing total reclaims, you did kind of a hybrid. Good example was Tibbetts Silver. That road was supposed to be completely, half of it was going to be reclaimed. Well, reclaimed, what, about an eighth of that road, right? And then we, we did an overlay on top of that, and DPW did a fantastic job, and that road is in great condition. We're doing some of these things in-house at a considerable cost savings. So, our cemetery expansion, if we would have put that out, it would have been a couple hundred thousand dollars to expand on less lawn. We're doing that in-house with our, with our resources. So, some of those things that we can do, some of the things, you know, we can't do. We're looking at creative ways in terms of some of our equipment. So, some of the times it works, and I'll take a sense it doesn't work. So, we just got briefed by DPW Director that we took a dump truck as an example. Oh, the engine was pretty good, let's take, replace the body that was rusted, put another body on it. Well, guess what, now the frame is starting to have issues, so we have, we have a nice body, but now we have, now we have another issue that we can do. So, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Now, we just, now, here's one that did work, our, our back, our back iron truck, which was a very expensive piece of equipment, it was a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar thing to replace that. We sent it down to Florida, the manufacturer, I think for a little over one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, we deferred it. And now it's working great, so, and we'll get some life out of it. So, we, we kind of will continue to do those types of things. But that's kind of, you know, where we are. When you look at CIP, we've been, we've been spending less and less and less on our capital improvements as years go by. Some of that is simply the economy. We cannot, we can't afford it. People are out of jobs, and you had to pick and choose your battles. This year, we have, what, a very, half a million dollar money per road or something, it's very modest in terms of that. That's not sustainable, though. We can't do that year after year after year. So, there's, there's certain things I think we're going to have to take a good hard look at, you know? One is, you know, is the services that we currently have, are we, you know, whether that be all the services that we have, can we afford to be open the hours that we are? And some of the severity, we all love the things that we do, we love Goffstown for what it's at, but if things are going to continue where they are with the economy, there's only so much, there's not much to cut from CIP anymore, folks. I'm just telling you that. So, the next thing is going to have to be staff. If you're going to keep your tax rate at a reasonable level or keep it level, it must be staff. There's no more, there's no more to go in, in CIP. It really isn't. Unless you're accepting of a lot of really bad roads, there's really not much. And that's kind of what we've done, we've taken it from road infrastructure or trucks and things of that nature. I'm just telling you, that's not, that's not sustainable. So, so certain things are going to have to give. We've done some things creatively over the last couple of years, some people may, or I know, some people in this room didn't like it, some people were supportive of it. You know, parks and recreation, more to some fee-based things. Now, that's going to help us in some respects. That's not the answer to, you know, to everything, but it, it was a way to try to bring a little bit of energy on the parks and recreation side. We continuously look at our fees and our revenues without the building fees, fire department fees, you name it. We look at it to make sure that we're competitive with surrounding communities. So, you know, those, those are some of the things that we have. Impact fees, those get, we look, those get looked at on the planning board side. And I think there's been, was there slight, was, I always remain the same, correct? Last year, Tim, if I'm not mistaken?
Some went up and some stayed.
Okay. Couple went up, but the majority of them kind of stayed the same. The, the same thing is there too, is that when you increase that fee, yes, it helps to offset some of your expenses, your capital expenses, but then if your impact fees are higher than neighboring towns, it's a disincentive for that developer maybe to, to come to your community and to, and to develop. So, my, you know, my concerns about the budget are simply that, is that there's not a whole lot more growth on, on the CIP items. You know, if we want our garbage picked up and our recycling picked up, we needed another garbage, we needed a garbage truck. So, we did that, we're, you know, we're getting another garbage truck. Plower truck, and we can't replace a driver, then do you sublet that out? Do you hide, do something privately? I don't know, you're going to have to think of some of these things. Lease purchase agreements, you're going to have to think about some, some things creatively. So, I just wanted to spark that discussion, that is, we weather this storm, but we can't keep weathering it.
I like the, I think, Tim, we've, a lot of discussion on CIP. Your scope in that committee, do you validate the priority of the need? Presenters of those needs, it's up to them to quote the value. You don't, you don't say, oh, the truck doesn't cost less or more, you accept their value. But your, your activity is to validate the need and try to balance it over the scope of six years. Okay, I'm turning it over to you, because I know you're a strong opponent.
Well...
Of CIP.
When we always, when we get talking about CIP, we always like to remind everybody that we're a Budget Committee, that's the most important thing, we're a Subcommittee of the Land Board. And we do exactly what you said. We're authorized by RSA as a Subcommittee of the Land Board, and we accept submissions from all department heads in towns, in town, and we weigh in the value of the request against the objective, the goals of the master plan, and the real need of the town based on a lot of things, projected growth, what the current situation is, and different things like that. So, we are a committee that does accept everything at face value from department heads, do not change values. We do, though, take those items. We accept a priority rating from department head on what the department head thinks that need is. I also defer to the school board as well, if the school board comes in. So, based on a one through four rating, that's when we decide if something needs to stay in in this year's presentation, or it could be moved out in outer years. The main goal of the whole exercise is to balance tax fights. We don't want to put in more of five-million-dollar equipment improvements in two thousand twelve and one-point-five million in two thousand and thirteen. We like to balance those numbers out and try to come out with a good year. We have seen the numbers change dramatically in the last two years. In the prior years from two thousand and six, we saw appropriations in the six-million-dollar range, requests in the six-million-dollar range, and then only less than a million dollars or a little over a million dollars being deferred in, in the outgoing years based on the Budget Committee deliberations and the Selectmen's decision and an ultimately vote. That number changed in two thousand and eleven to where we pushed out, don't quote me on the exact figure, but it was something like fourteen million dollars of the request. In, in two thousand and eleven, we only approved sixteen percent of the CIP matrix. The year before that, we approved sixty-eight percent of the matrix. And a year prior to that, we were approving on the average about seventy or eighty or ninety percent of the matrix, because times were good, steel was less, fuel was less, all the manufacturing costs were less. People maybe had a little less of an expectation, now we have higher expectations. So, it costs money to do business. CIP simply tries to present a balanced approach to the Budget Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and then turn it over to them for the decisions.
Peter, how does that...
Yes, Peter. From the Budget Committee's standpoint, when, when CIP gets to us, we know it's gone through planning stages, gone through CIP, then through the Planning Board, then the Budget, then the Board of Selectmen have had their shot at it, then it comes back to them, then it comes to the Budget Committee. That's ultimately a exposed story. But in the few, last few years, it's almost been used as when some cuts need to be made at your end, the Board of Selectmen, that's the first place they go, also. And is that, Scott, are you telling me that's going to be a change in that attitude?
I'm just speaking for myself, Peter. I, I, we have not had any conversation. I, I just, I said, I personally do not think that it's sustainable.
Would you agree, would you agree that that's the first place you guys go on a basis to get the numbers down? You're the first one that takes the hit at it.
Yes.
And, and Peter, I'll, I'll back it up. I personally, as we go into the budget season, I'm going to be favoring certain capital improvement projects that I'll, I'll argue before this board, must remain in the CIP, and not be taken out as a likely cost saving, bottom line. So, I'm, I'm seeing the bad side of doing that the last couple of years, and so there's things that I need to protect, that I need to keep in infrastructure improvements in this county.
I first want to say, I miss the CIP, sorry, I have a conflict, haven't been part of it for two or three years, miss it. I wholeheartedly agree with the Senator about the CIP is the first place to look, and that's not right. You, you need the CIP. One way to possibly save money, though it costs money to begin with, is to have a vehicle, a capital reserve, and the way a vehicle capital reserve would do for you, Selectmen, is, let's say you have in the CIP a brand-new, I think, fire car, brand-new grader for the DPW, but a lot comes, you find one that's used, it's only a year or so old, and it's a steel, you have the money, you need to go grab it. But it's time sensitive to do that. But when we do it now, you have to go to the town meeting, the lawn process, and any opportunity like that is gone. So, we could save money by getting fairly new equipment or stuff that's on sale, if you had the money in there, and Selectmen have the authority to do it.
Tim, please, and then we'll go to Selectmen Bruce.
Well, to speak to what Fred said, I was not on the committee when we had capital reserve funding for different lines. We are now incorporating the Standing Committee, and I think that that is part of the problem of CIP. Instead of solving away a few dollars each year for each different line and actually saving for that high ticket, right? We are now doing it by a different process, which was constructed through the CIP. The CIP did not change that process, it was restructured. And I think the problem is, is that you're, when you're looking at five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for a fire engine this year, and as Fred said, four-hundred-thousand for a grader, and two-ninety-five for a trash truck, and three-eighty-five for a lap lawn, you know, the numbers are just staggering. And when you go, all those numbers are the closest, they're just, oh, boy, that's too much money. But if you did do a capital reserve saving account for it, you'd get delighted and revamp the way the committee operates, you might stand a chance at having better success. Another thing that's happened, and I'll try to be brief, is that a lot of the funding for these projects and vehicles comes from loss-saving revenue, which is part of our committee. National DOT grants for the vehicle twenty-year, which is now downsized to the ten-year program, that declined or disappeared completely. North Mass Street example, which has been on our matrix for years with a possibility of a DOT grant to work, it's not going to happen, there is no DOT money. The school building, maybe funding, funding, funding programs is debunked, there is no school building available for school, so when the committees need some, they require the taxpayers to put the whole business. The only outside look we have right now is federal grant programs, and the fire chief and the police chief have worked very hard at funding grants, and I'm sure that the rail trail committee has also gotten grants from the trail, from the funding sources. And unfortunately, that's the only funding we have right now available for us, because the, the downshifting of the state government to the towns is having this, is having a huge impact on these types of projects and their availability of the comfortable issues.
Selectmen Bruce? Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the big elephant in, in the room is that we probably, even this past year, we probably have somewhere around five to six million dollars of CIP needs, and last year, we spent, what was it, at one point, some, Tim, do you have those numbers in front of you at one point?
Yeah, last year, the town requested, the town proposed eight million, three-eighty-three. The adopted budget was one million and seventy thousand.
Right.
The school proposed eight million, six-sixty-two, and the adopted budget was one-point-seven-four-one million records. It's only sixteen percent.
Right. So, so, I mean, that is the reality, and, you know, I, I hate to say it, but there needs to be more communication amongst the people around this table, and I, I mean, I'm not, I'm looking at you, Philip, because you're the school board. The school board, the town, they represent the two entities that are the ones who have, you know, ninety percent of that CIP, and collectively, we have to either take turns, decide, or, I don't know, maybe we do what they do in marketing, they bring in focus groups of voters, and, and you say, okay, you know, give your sales pitch and see what people want to do. But what happened last year, what I saw was that whether it be the town and the school, and then throw in Crispin's House and this thing and that thing, people were just like, oh my God, you know, they picked and chose that nobody wanted, you know? They, they, they were willing to spend some money, but I think there was such a lack, there was such a lack of priorities. I think, I think the voters looked for us to have a meeting of the minds between town and school, and they just saw so many competing interests. I think, that was my take on it. They saw a renovation of Bartlett and Maple Avenue, they saw a field behind the high school and an art, an artory, and they saw town road program, they saw this, they saw that, and they just felt like, whoa, 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 I can't, I can't afford it. Somehow, we probably have to do a better job of leaders as picking and choosing what's the, what, what do we desperately need now? And then get, as Tim was saying, to get back on that incremental approach of using CIP the way it's intended to do. But that's not going to happen, I don't think, in one or two years. I think it's going to take us five to ten years to get back on, I mean, this recession has, has had a pretty big impact on all of us and, and how town governments, state governments function. It's going to take us five or ten years to get back on that track, but we need to do it slowly and incrementally. We don't think we'll be able to do it in a fast fashion. So, at some point, you know, while I respect everybody around this table, the school board and the Board of Selectmen are the ones who truly, and maybe CIP are going to have to get around and, and have a powwows of what are we going to build? Because either we're going to renovate the Bartlett School, in my opinion, I walked through that school both before and after the vote, I was proud. That school is in really bad shape. I mean, that, that is, that is a, that is a number-one priority. Now, can I say the same thing about Maple Avenue School? No, I can't. Bartlett is in dire need of a renovation, folks. And is it more important than some town stuff? In my opinion, it is. So, we, we have to develop a pecking order here. But then again, I will also say candidly, and again, no disrespect to the school board, but, you know, putting our official surface down in the back of a high school and, and doing the Bartlett School, I mean, you can't compare the two, you know? And the same thing with us, quite frankly. And the same thing with us, quite frankly. Maybe we should have bit the bullet on something on the town to make sure that the Bartlett School got run in there. But there's certain things that, you know, have to happen. And collectively, that's why we're all here as leaders, is to say, okay, how do we do it?
Elizabeth?
Um, yeah.
Peter?
Two quick points. One is the budget committee's criticism. We receive very good information on CIP items that are in the operating budget. There's usually a very full discussion of them at the department heads. CIP items that get moved into special warrant articles, we get almost no information, at least last year. I mean, the two school items, they were presented to us and we were told to vote. And we had nothing to go on. That might help. It might help if we had more full information before the special warrant was ready to vote. Another sort of angle is, there's always a lot of talk about increasing rents, the water costs will be solved, it could increase revenue, which is a very attractive idea. I want to kind of tie in with this building here. This renovation was funded by a special warrant article in 2005, which we then leveraged through a series of grants and donations to pay for this, this room. It has a great deal of potential as a source of revenue. You could have weddings here, you could have meetings, you could have a whole performing arts center. But the big question is, is the town willing to invest the amount to make this a profitable revenue source? I think there's this idea that we can have revenue without any investment of our heart and just start breaking it. You know, if you wanted to set up a place like this and make money from it, you could. But you're going to have to pony up some money upfront to do all the things that this room, you know, the lighting and the chairs and the booking somebody and hiring staff to make that happen. So it's kind of a different angle than what you guys are working on, but I know that they do bring up, people do bring up revenue all the time. You could rent this or sell this or pitch this differently.
Thank you. Philip. To, to both Tim and Scott's points and probably everybody around the table's points, CIP capital improvements are not something we can put to the wayside. We have to make that investment. The district has married together the notions that they're talking about, thoughtful CIP planning and capital reserve, capital reserve accounts. So then you know, and I think there's an opportunity here, we've been wonderfully successful at having a capital reserve fund. The community, at least for the last two years and maybe three years, has looked at the opportunity to make that investment in a capital reserve fund with a dedicated purpose and said, no, thank you, not now. And that may very well be simply a product of the times or a product of too many choices. So maybe, just maybe, what we should be doing is looking at those capital reserve things more globally rather than in our silos. Even if the school district got 56% or 57% of that capital reserve fund, which is about what we spend every year, that is, at least we have a rational basis for looking at it that way. But David, to your point, and I'm sorry, I've been trying desperately not to say this, but I'm going to. We are competing with the selectmen for resources. We understand that there are priorities. I'm not willing to sacrifice the 12 potholes on my road for a computer at school. I have to make a choice about that, okay? And the community has to make those choices. And our charge, I think, as Scott points out, is to help make those choices easier rather than more difficult. So maybe one of the conversations that goes out of this, that we don't leave tonight intending to have, but we schedule it and then we make a commitment to doing, is something that looks at the community as a whole rather than in our silos. And so if there's a capital reserve fund, if we take the $500,000 that went into the selectmen's reserve fund and we put that in a capital reserve fund as CIP, and we take the 300 or 400 or 600, whatever's in the capital reserve fund, and we find a way that to get that into a common pool, and then we work with CIP and things that belong in CIP stay there and we begin to manage that. Like, to everybody's point here, as long as we're talking about, gee, that project's not very good or it's not worthy enough, or that project isn't very good, it's not worthy enough, then we aren't really managing. We're just lobbing grenades over the wall at each other and that's not doing our community a good thing. Because all of these things are a bit of points, they have to do with prioritizing needs. Impact fees. Because you brought it up, it's a really great point. We had a fantastic presentation about impact fees at the school board. My, humbly, my takeaway from that was, it's a management tool. And so to the people who make these decisions, whether it's the selectmen or the planning board, CIP, whoever it is, let's use it as a management tool. Because if you want to stop building residential development and increase commercial, you can use those impact fees as a management tool for the very good reason that you're going to push some stuff away, but you're going to do it with the knowledge that you're pushing somebody away from developing something. And if you're pushing somebody away, then maybe you have more dollars to use elsewhere as an incentive. So if you want commercial development, if you want to push a developer something on back over because there's land, and this isn't a position, it's just a for instance, then maybe you can use that tool as a vehicle that makes it more attractive, either for neighbors or for commercial development. Just some thoughts around some of the things you've said there.
Thank you. And David, you were next, and I'll go to you.
Going back to, I think, prioritizing, Scott, you brought up the school with the turf and all that. As a voter, if I had known that Maple Avenue, Waterborne, if that's the case, you know what I'm saying? And if that would be broken out as a separate thing and saying, that's something that has to be done. Roof's leaking, damage is being done to the building, you have to get, but to bundle it up with turf and a field, that wasn't a good move.
Fairness, it wasn't quite that choice, but your points won't take it.
You understand, that's, that's the way it came across, you know? Scott, and, you know, as you talked about prioritizing things, and I drive down Mash Road and I put the sidewalks, I don't see a lot of people working on. That's another thing that's people's, and I don't know the funding issues or anything that, but the perception is, geez, why am I putting sidewalks in? You don't really see that many people walking down there, but my road is caving in, but they're doing the sidewalk with the granite curb and all that. I'm just, that's the perception. So it looks like prioritizing isn't being done and it's a perception, it may very well be. I hope you can understand what I'm saying.
Right, I think, I'm glad that you raised that because, I mean, it goes back to that whole communication piece. Because if, you know, when this came before us, I mean, said, okay, we were already mobilized down in that area of town, the drainage is already done, we had sidewalks on CIP since 2000 to start from, from that road, and there's an opportunity now to finish that project for $60,000, I think it was? It's like, okay, if we don't do it, will it ever happen? And you're saying, and you have the staff, because we weren't doing all this road reclamation work to prep for that, so you had the resource and so you're like, okay, spend $60,000 and finish off the project that, by the way, was in CIP for $300,000. And so it was pretty much the materials, you're like, okay, you've got these folks. Right. And I, right, and I understand, but that's why we talk, that's why we put communication as one of our, now, I would hope that, I think that vote was 5-0, but I would hope that if you have to make some of those decisions, you know, you, I do, I do personally the way that I know the whole board does too, and you say, but it's how you communicate it.
So with Philip here, right, there was, there's still opportunities for communications. This board, I know, we're looking forward to August when Mash Road is going to be paved curb to curb.
Sure.
All the way to 114. And what was, turned out to be late in the development of that project was, well, we can finish the sidewalk and then pave up to that curb of the sidewalk and it'll be a finished project. It's not like we're going to come back in for much more money two or three years from now.
I understand, so.
Just looking at what, you know, on the nature of the CIP, where you try to get the best use of your money over a long span of time, that project is doing that. And we've had.
But it's how we communicate.
It's how we communicate. So thank you, Peter. And, yes, Jason.
A couple of things, just from Selectmen, Bruce's comments, exactly what I'm talking about. Everything that you just said about curbing would be a perfect example of Scott Brochelle and having, and having a department.
Dick man, dick man name from G T F.
I understand any one of the thought, sit there and talk about, every single week, you know, sit there and change off, just like the article. And you can talk about the specific things and why these things would be done. And people might want to watch, but coming back to the point where we give them one more opportunity and for information, to gather information, it's just, it just needs to be done. But my, a different note, just my perception. Perception is, my feeling is that we can sit here all day long and talk about, oh, we should try and work together to try to get a piece of the pie. My feeling is that the school district is always at odds with the selectmen, and the selectmen is always at odds with the school district. And that's just my feeling, where I read the articles, watching what I watch, and I think that's wrong. I personally think that when we were talking about CIP and trying to work together, I think that's exactly what the intelligent individuals in this room is exactly what should be happening. If you could, if the citizens can't see a united front from the leadership of the community, why are they going to sit in front of that and get it put in front of them? Because they're going to be like, well, they just want more money this month. If there was more of a united situation between the school board and the selectmen and the CIP or and the budget committee, instead of trying to go forward in different ways, you know, just, just my perspective and what I've talked to, my family and friends that are in Boston, it just seems like there's always competition. And I think that's not a good thing when we're all trying to, you know, do the best thing for the community, save as much, educate the children the best, have the best facilities. And, you know, Bartlett School, I've never seen Bartlett School. I love to walk, wherever you walk through and tell me all about all that, this videotape that I tell you right now, I'm sure by watching, you might not check right now, well, my son's not going there, but I'll tell you right now, that's the only way you're going to get it. You've got to pull up the heartstrings because people don't want to get money for it. Who wants to get money for it? You know, but if they see how bad it is, it ruins the tribe and do it. So, anyway, so it's my thought. So when's our next meeting?
Jason, you continue to give us lots of challenges. Thank you. And I think, test, you're going to need them.
Well, I'm going to get you down there on top of a clearly not very lifeguarding thing. There are major players in the community that have a major financial impact. And then there's Parks and Rec and the library, and the supervisors and the checklist, who are dealing with crumbs on the budget. And it feels to me as though we are, for the last three years at least, approaching our budget cycle with fear and terror and virtual threats that we will be shut down. So I'm a little bit tired of, of the severity of the anticipation. We have been extraordinarily lucky or beautifully supported by the community to uphold what we've had. We've made adjustments. We've got a great staff at Parks and Rec, we've got a great staff at the library, Town Hall has a hardworking, hungry of people that are doing everything they can to keep it together. So is my takeaway from this evening, buckle down, it's going to be worse and play worse and plan on cutting people? What is my takeaway from this? I mean, we're a flea on the butt of the elephant in terms of your CIP process.
You are, but you're not, Tess. I mean, you are proportionately the same as anyone else.
That, hold on, Scott. I think CIP works. What happens after CIP is done, doesn't work. That's almost a triangular conversation for a budget CIP or a selectman and school. I guess that's a reckoning. But for the rest of us, where do you want us to fit in here? What do you want us to bring to this table to make this meaningful conversation? I, I feel that corner of the room, this corner of the room, this corner of the room, that corner of the room are vital pieces that uphold the big ticket items that are sitting over there over here. It's all critical. I don't, I don't dismiss that at all, Scott. But what do you want from us besides sitting in absolute abject terror?
Well, you're the only responder. I, we're getting into the dialogue of competing needs among our various committees and I don't want to go down that road too much further, but you're bringing it forward and we've got the challenges here and we've got the challenges in the park. You're, you're letting us know about that. I don't want to defend one way or the other in this evening, but if you want to summarize. No, I mean, if you don't, I know. I'll defer.
Yes?
I'm Tina Daniels and I'm chair of one committee and part of the other, but what I'm just trying to hear is.
You're here for two reasons.
I'm here for two reasons. But like, listening to the library and to Parks and Rec, and I totally agree with Tess, but what I think the difference is, like, the all different committees and the communications to the people, the library, of which we are, my husband Earl's there all the time, I mean, they make you feel that the average citizen has ownership in it. And I keep thinking, as I've been listening to all this about communication, if you watch PPS, they'll show ads, it'll be kind of an ad like, you know, the White Mountains or the National Park, and they keep saying it belongs to you. Parks and Rec and the library has done an outstanding job with making citizens feel that it belongs to them. The rest of it is, like, with the school board and CIP and stuff, the average person, they don't use those services in the same way, okay? You don't send your kid to CIP this summer, you know? You don't.
That could be, that could be a good idea. CIP now, it's a revenue charity.
But it's, it's a more distant and a more, it becomes like an academic exercise in the budget thing. No one even wants to be involved with understanding that. They just want, you know, they want synopsis and then they want to go. But the thing is, I think with the different boards, they have not created, and maybe it has to be done a different way, that it belongs to them. Like Peter's talking about the sidewalks, but I agree with Elizabeth. It kind of comes to this, unless the investment is made in the sidewalks, people aren't going to walk down the side of the road. I can walk to here, but I don't because there's no sidewalk. And I desperately wish the sidewalk could go up that way. Because if you don't invest in the infrastructure of the sidewalk, people aren't going to come. Why would they come? If you don't invest into here, why would they come for a wedding when it's half finished, you know? And I think a lot of people in town don't have a sense of feeling that the town belongs to them, the sidewalks are for them, this is for you, this is the benefit. That's never really communicated. And especially if now, when you're hearing the message about cutting staff, I mean, I don't know how the library could work any more efficiently than it's doing. Or, I mean, you know, now you get people going about we're going to be cut. I mean, you certainly can't cut the supervisors and the checklist because we are at such crumb level that, and this is a job that is no longer just sort of a volunteer thing. This takes, this has grown exponentially in the last six or seven years. This is, the supervisors and the checklist position is a business. It's a business for the town and where the interface between the state.
And I understand that the state level isn't efficient to you too.
Right.
I think, yeah, so.
Completely different game than what was seven years ago. This is a business.
Jim?
Just like to go back to the capital reserve funding. Back when the CIP was operating and we were building good amounts, I think people probably have the opinion that the Washington state, raising appropriate taxes to have savings accounts, wasn't necessary to do. But now we're falling into a time when raising and incorporating for savings accounts could benefit the library because they have their own CRM. Everybody in the town departments put each other on a capital reserve fund with small additions over a period of time. And one example of that that take off big time for Gosham was about four years ago, we had CIP and the fire department propose a capital reserve fund for the fire department.
and it was four hundred and twenty thousand at the time. Subsequently, over the last few years, it has that same article that's been. But the one year that it did pass, the chief applied for a grant with Homeland Security for a nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar tower ladder, which we currently own. And we own it because the taxpayers had the foresight to put money in a capital reserve fund. So when the grant became available, the chief was able to go to the board and select them and say, we need, our share is two hundred and sixty thousand, we need it next week, but we can't get the deal. So guess what? The money was on account. It was in the savings account. And that is, goes back to what Fred said earlier, because Fred chaired the committee before I did, and he has a lot of knowledge of this. If we are able to put a little bit away over a period of time, then when the deal does come up, we're in a position to do something about it. If you're going to apply for any kind of a grant, you have to have your matching funding. You can't apply for a grant and acquire matching funding and then go five months down the road to the committees, to the town meeting, to the delivery session, and put a warrant article on only to have it fail, and then the grant is gone. Have to be able to strike from the other side. So my thought is, when times are in a different situation, where we could use the capital reserve funding and we could take advantage of it, now would be a good time for the CIP to work with board of selectmen and the citizens, and maybe restore that process and stop the appropriations and process which we do right now.
Thank you, Jane. We've been at budget discussion for one hour, and that's probably sufficient, and we need to start wrapping it up. Closing arguments and closing discussion points, please. Once around the room. All right. One, one of the, you know, I'm sorry if I portrayed it doom and gloom, but in my opinion, it's pretty serious. And it's going to continue to be serious until the New Hampshire economy is getting better. I just listened to Dennis Delay, he's an economist, he said we're in a very, very slow recovery. And we're doing better than most states in New England, we're doing a lot better, we're in the top five of all states in the country on a recovery right now, but it's still very slow going. Five years ago, five to ten years ago, the board of selectmen projected revenue growth at two percent. That bought the board of selectmen to probably three hundred thousand dollars, right? So that three hundred thousand dollars of extra money, which was extra money per cent.
We're talking about town valuation.
Town valuation, town valuation would go up. And, and when the times were better, people were registering more boats, registering more cars, and you, and you saw more money in the revenue progress. Over the last five to six years, we have been budgeting zero percent town valuation growth, okay? At the same exact time, health insurance has gone up, two hundred, I'm talking town side, two hundred thousand dollars a year in some cases, all right? Then you couple in wage, some wages, and we've given out nominal wage, wage increases. But I can tell you that the whole notion of step and cola, and I mean, I'm speaking for myself, I don't speak for the board, but it's not that unsustainable. That has to be stopped. We have to get more practical there. You, then you throw in fuel costs, and fuel costs, you know, and energy costs have gone up dramatically over the last five years. So we've seen zero percent increase in our revenues, and yet we've seen costs in our, in energy, insurance, nominal, and, and the wages, et cetera. That is difficult to sustain. And at the same time, if we did, over the last five years, we said, okay, we're not going to do this road, we're not going to replace this truck, we're not going to do this fire engine, et cetera. And we've been very, very fortunate to get the grants, step, police, fire, at least have got through Homeland Security. But we're, we still have to be very cautious as, as we proceed. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to predict that it will get better in two or three years, but I can tell you that I don't think we're going to be hiring people over the next couple of years. Do I think that we may see, have, need some attrition is possible, but it's, it's not, it's not, I'm not that optimistic that we're going to be coming out of this as quickly as, as we could. We're starting to see slow, slow things, slow, so, slow growth. But until Sue comes up to me and Scott Bartlett starts saying, you know what, putting in one percent increase in valuation, I'm not going to feel a little bit better, and I haven't, I haven't gotten that one fuzzy yet, you know? So I think that's where, you know, when we, now, as soon as we start to see some more, you know, development, more money changing hands, then we can feel a little more confident. But, you know, if, if it's, you know, strap on, and here we go, yeah, Tess, I'm going to say, I, I can't predict what, what's going to happen. And I'll tell you one thing, is.
Scott, that's not what I'm asking for though, but I'm asking for a little less hysteria. And that's what it feels like.
I'm not giving you hysteria, I'm giving you reality.
As, like, the last three years coming into budget conversations, it's been near.
But it, and it should be, because we've, we've gone through the, the largest economic challenge that our country has faced is the Great Depression. If it, if it didn't feel like, if it didn't feel like hysteria, then it should have felt like hysteria. So, and as a matter of fact, I think our town has done pretty damn good in terms of trying to preserve our services.